Is we here? All in favor? Any opposed? Order, okay, we're back into public session. And we'll start by, we'll all rise with a wonderful weekend. This is what we started off.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to repose nation.
Thank you. The office of friendly reminder, the silence. Next, I'll take a motion to move the agenda to the table. Motion my Ms. Rivera, seconded by Ms. Jersey. All in favor? Any opposed? Dr. Evans, are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda?
There are none at this time.
Another motion to adopt. Motion by Mr. Groden, seconded by Ms. Rivera. Any objections? I'll accept the motion to approve the minutes for the July 20th, 2023 meeting. Motion by Ms. Mear, seconded by Ms. Groden. All in favor? So ordered. A motion for the approval of the minutes from the board meeting on July 31st. Motion by Ms. Rivera, seconded by Mr. Groden. All in favor? So ordered. Next, it looks like we're up for presentations, a presentation on the comprehensive support plan.
Yes, thank you. At a present tonight, we're joined by George Cook Elementary School Principal, Virginia Gallant, who will be presenting on these comprehensive support improvement plan for the upcoming school year. So I will turn this over to Ms. Gallant.
I'm happy to be here this evening. Back in March, we were identified as a comprehensive support and improvement school. And we received that identification by the state based on last year's 2021-2023 third grade scores. So these were the kids that, you know, started in kindergarten with KLR and Cook, two separate schools. Then they became K2, 3, 5 schools. They went through COVID. They had a lot of, you know, challenges. And so their scores did not meet state standards. And so we were identified in all areas except for students with disabilities that we were below, below what the expectation is for the state. So they were, we were, we've been asked to charge with creating a plan that will remedy the situation and get our good footing. And with that comes a lot of money to fund some of those changes. So in March, the instructional coaches, Carlin and I attended a planning session in Albany, kind of find out the steps that we needed to take. And when we returned, we formed a committee that had parents, stakeholders, teachers, our instructor, which are here tonight, really would like to thank them. I really want to thank our full committee because they did a lot of work. It was really, it's been a great process, but their moves are awesome, assistant principal, and Sue Rodriguez, our incredible instructional coach. We were guided by who recently retired and came out of retirement, helped facilitate the process for us. So we really had a dynamic group of the parents were fantastic. And so what we did is the state provided us with templates, templates to take us through this process. And so we looked at a lot of data. We identified needs. We did a lot of gallery walks and and identified the areas that we needed to work on. And so those are the areas that I'm going to review with you tonight and talk to you a little bit about what our ideas are to, to support commitments that we need. And I did provide you with a copy of our, of our plan. And it goes into greater detail than probably what I will give tonight. So our four commitments address our chronic absenteeism and attendance rate for students. We're committed to using the best instructional practices to ensure great low proficiency in ELA and to also do the same in math. And our last commitment is to strengthen our partnership with families and the community. So our first commitment, we have a fairly high chronic absenteeism rate, you know, in looking over last year's data, it was very evident to us. And the rate is about 10% higher than it was pre-COVID. So we're about somewhere around 53%. Too high. And chronic absenteeism is defined as students that are absent 10% or more out of the school year. So that if you have 180 days, I mean, that adds up. So the, the ways that we have to address this is to create a pre-tiered system. So we would start with a tier one building-wide prevention. Move to tier two, identifying those students and creating a personalized outreach. And then tier three, more intensive. So for example, in looking at the data, we realized that our L students, the language learners, an even greater percentage of absenteeism. And so at the end of the school year, the district translator, Alex Perez, and I got together, looked at our calendars and found a day where we could call these families in and have scheduled appointments and meet, you know, half an hour at a time and really try to identify what the obstacles and challenges were. Not to, not us versus them, but a more partnership. What can we do to alleviate some of those challenges? And it really was awesome. They came, last week, they came in, all of the families that we had scheduled, all the one family, they all came and we sat out in the garden and we talked about some, some real concerns and issues, right? And so it helps to give us some insight of ways to be, ways of solving. And so we plan on doing the last part of that, you know, over the year. And we do have three more, three more days in the summer scheduled with, with other families, rest of the families and those that are willing to come in and able to. So this morning, we met with our kindergarten grade level leaders. We have our kindergarten kickoff scheduled for September 5th at 1:30. And we just talked about the design of what that will look like. But something that came out of the work that we did with the committee in the spring was that, you know, let's meet with the, the parents of the kindergarten students and really try to take them through the day of a kindergarten, right? Sometimes you have this assumption, you send your kid off to kindergarten, they're recessed, they're coloring. It's cute. Like, but, but attendance rates are high and especially in kindergarten. And so we really want to get across to them that they're doing, there's a lot that is happening in their day. And every day that they miss is really setting them back. So Paige Moore, who was on the committee and her co-teacher, Jess Vandermees, they put together a video of daily kindergarten, early snapshots, takes them through everything from morning meeting through to the end of the day. And, and so we're going to have a conversation, you know, with the parents. So, so the parents will come in, they'll meet with the teachers, the classrooms, and then they will come to us at 2:00 and we will have a parent meeting, which we pretty, we talk to them about, you know, healthy habits, you know, nighttime routines, morning routines and, and in the anxiety sometimes that it creates for the kids when they come in late. And we're willing to work with them, whatever they may need help with. So those are just some ways that we plan on addressing the attendance. And we also, with part of our sick money that will come to us, want to create calming borders, borders throughout the school so that when kids, you know, are stressed out or they need a break and they just need that separate time in privacy, they have a place that they can go. It's not just an area and not anything that's going to cause anxiety, right? They're, they're looking for a way to de-escalate, not escalate. So something that we've already been working on is our proficiency in ELA, our commitment to. And we separated these out. So we have win blocks in place, what I need, and that is exactly what I need. And that's what the students get. And they're grouped by their skills and what is needed. There's constant work and regrouping done every week between the classroom teachers, the AIS teachers, the teaching assistants play a huge role in what happens during our win times. The, the teachers have MTSS meetings where they, they bring kids that, you know, have academic concerns and other concerns to these meetings and try to intervene. We use ESCAT, which is small group automation tool. And that is, you know, really founded in structured literacy, research-based science of reading. The assessment calendar that we started creating last year really helps teachers with pacing. It helps kind of keep people, you know, on track. This year, this summer, we've done a ton of work right from the beginning, like the first day of summer. And we did a lot of work with our assistant superintendent, Mrs. Carlin, and our director of ELA, the, all of the elementary principals in creating a K5 literacy plan. And this year, we're really trying to let our instructional coaches, like Coach, they get, they, they, they're in a unique position. And it's really important that we keep them free to be able to coach. And so that's what they're going to be doing this year. There's a lot of coaching, a lot of going in the classrooms, kind of showing, you know, best practices, supporting the teachers to support students. And part of what we will do with some of the funds that we'll be receiving is making sure that our math and ELA instructional coach get that professional development that, that they need. They're already phenomenal, but you know what? There's so much work that is, that is out and available for them to continue to be able to support the teachers. Yeah, yeah.
For the ELA plan, small group interventions, that's, how long are those intervention times?
So there's, so it's a 40-minute block every single day. What happens during that 40-second, that 40-second block? Forty-minute block is that the AIS teacher, who was the academic intervention service teacher, and the teaching assistant, you know, who evolved and trained in the work that we're doing, they, they are scheduled to go into one classroom. There's a teacher, an AIS teacher, there's a TA. And they, they have small groups. Those groups are, are set up by the skill that they're working on. And then those groups can change. Kids can come in and out depending on, on skill. So it's really small group, getting 20 minutes at a, at a time and then, you know, to the next group. So, and then while, while those students aren't in, the students that aren't in groups and that are working independently should be working on skills that are supporting what they need. So there's a lot of work that goes into the structure and the setup of that. Kudos to our instructional coaches for making that happen. So this, earlier this summer, you appointed a library media specialist for us. So thank you. We're happy to have a librarian aboard. And she has been breathing life back into that library. It had been kind of closed and shut down since COVID. It was already an antiquated K5 library. And we're going to make it a place where kids want to be and develop a passion for reading for that. It'll have a maker space area. It's kind of a two, two-year project. But this year, we're already working Joe, our friend Joe. And he is helping us to get, you know, shelving that is on, you know, masters, a big role. And, and it'll be great because the, the kids won't be looking at the spines of books that they can't read, but they'll be looking at the pictures and, you know, interacting. And it'll be a two-year process, but we're really excited about that. And, you know, just being, being able to provide a space for the, the kids and the adults to, to interact. Our third commitment is similar to ELA. Our focus is on math and becoming proficient in math. Again, we have a math win time. What is new this year is that we, after COVID, our focus was ELA. And that was sort of the direction of the district. And of course, we can't leave math out. And so we did not have math AIS providers last year. And this year, we do. So we have three, three math AIS. So we have teams, three different teams. And so there's one AIS on each of the teams. And so that should be, you know, that'll be a huge asset for the teachers, for the kids. And again, we discussed math data during the MTSS meetings. And Carlin and our director, Barb Rechio, are involved in working with our instructional coach, Erin Lynch, to, you know, align and support the work that we're doing. A lot of, a lot of work has been done with Heidi Bromley. She's, she is a she's a math coach from West Star, Boise. And she's already been very helpful. She's scheduled to do a lot more work with us, which we need. So we're excited to have that happen. And then lastly, our last commitment, we're nothing, right? Without our families and our partnership with our community. So we, we had a pretty active family engagement committee last year. And we did some pretty cool things. One of the, the nights that we had was a literacy night where the families came in and, and worked with the kids to, with their own kids to tell a story or share, share something. And they did a recording of it and they took a picture together. It was, you know, their tradition or something they wanted to pass down and share, you know, for their child to have a memory of. So we plan on doing more events and things like that. Our family engagement team creates monthly calendars and translates them in every language that we have representative, represented in our school. And we also have good news from Cook, or it's that classes will be sending out. The district translator, Alex, has done a lot with us really to build some of those connections. And, and as always, we will closely with Epic. And our PTO, we're at the PTO and we already have the events, you know, planned for the year. So those are some of the ways that we are working to address those substandard questions. Mr. Groden, are you first?
You're AIS.
This is against fire code.
Yeah, I know. You know, we know.
In the classroom.
That's stuck in the hallway.
Yeah.
Taylor questions? I think you're involved. That was awesome.
Yeah.
Big deal.
Yeah, we did it. Some more, yeah, some more reading. Yeah, Lisa, let us have campfires in the back. It was safe. We were cooking food, so it was okay. So.
Anything that you did in the past, like past such as instead of these, these that take time, something like computer programming on kids? I mean, was that something that you did in the past? Did you do anything in assessments or any kind of trying to like, right now, you're proposing having that AIS. And this past year, you've had ELA AIS. Was there something that was going on maybe within the past five years to spell class? Curious if there's anything that you were just trying to like, retool and help the kids out in a way that didn't really pan out very well, see scraps?
You know, it's hard to, it's hard for me really to, you know, to kind of have that. Just because, like I, like, so the schools had been K5, so that wasn't there at the time. And then, and then we went into COVID. And there was really a, it's towards like a comparison of what, well, like a measure of what was working or not working. I think one thing is that we didn't have, we didn't have super kids. And I'm not sure for how long we had that for our ELA curriculum before open court. But before that, there really wasn't a ELA curriculum that we were following. So and I think too, that our, our win times weren't defined. So we, we had the right structures in place, but maybe not the right, not the right process. Like now, we're really looking at, at data and making decisions about what kids need rather than what we think they need. I think that's
You gave your vote with 43 to 53% or even way higher with attendance. Is there something, is there a way that, I, I'd like to capitalize on people's funnel. You're missing out. And if the little ones, random early, if they see that they could, just throw it out there, win something tangible, bragging, like on a necklace. For September, you stay in, if you're here every day, you get it. October, it's a dip, whatever. They would have something tangible they could show off. They could, is there, are there incentives? I, I'm talking about like, adults will play Ski Ball for 3,000 tickets for this Transformer raid. I'm just saying, no cameras were used. So I know that there's a person on this side of the table, he's always in my seat, that had perfect attendance, got pencils from Monticello, got pens in middle school, got t-shirts right up until they missed one day. But otherwise, Monticello has had incentivizing programs to get the kids going in that direction with even making a big deal. When people see it, they get, everybody likes to be seen. Is there anything like that to say, here, you did, yo, you did September. Yes. If it's five minutes of fame, you know, if you add it up, it's going to be an hour.
Yeah, I think that's something definitely that our committee needs to explore some more. And we've had those conversations. And at a K2 level, our struggle is always, it's not necessarily the kids. Because of the kids that they aren't there. And even in the conversations and meetings that I've had with the families, right? It's because of bigger issues, right? Whether the third, the night shift or doctor's appointments for another child that had to go down to the city and they don't have childcare and, you know. And so it's a delicate line of, we want to, you know, reward the kids and excite them and, and acknowledge them. But we also don't, you know, want to create a situation where the other kids that aren't in control of that, they don't have access to that too. And so, so we have talked about possibly looking at like class, you know, doing like class attendance. So it's group, group things. But yeah, it's definitely something that, that I think could work. And then we need to think about some more and look at all you. Right, you're on the committee. And you can bring, you know, your attendance awards from when we were
There you go.
Any other?
I have a question. Do you actually have a common room for a child that have a rough moment?
Yeah, so we, so when we, when I got to cook, there was something called an ALC. And that was, that was a room where kids, you know, kids misbehaving in class and they get sent, they get sent there. It's not doing their work and they're sleeping, they get sent there. And so coming out of COVID, when we were really looking to maximize space and, you know, reduce our class numbers and get as many teachers into rooms, it didn't make sense to have that room. And so we got rid of it. And, and the thought with that was that it creates a bad situation both ways, right? It makes it easy for the kid that wants a change of scenery, you know, to go somewhere else. And it makes it easy on the instructor or the teacher in the classroom to easily, like, you've annoyed me once too many times, like, just, you know where to go, out. And so it's really forcing us to change our practices. And in, in creating a space, a lot of times, we, we have sensory walks and things like that in, in the school. And kids will come down to the administrative offices to, you know, to, to calm and often might go in the Sarah's office and there's music, like, like nice calm music playing, the lights are dim. And, and sometimes those kids, and sometimes, right? Sometimes we need 10 minutes to change that mindset and regroup. And so just a different approach to recognize that we have emotions and that we need to not be punished for them, but to be guided in ways to, in given strategies to kind of come through them and, and then back into class.
What happens if you see a child who's, what is the approach?
So it starts with classroom, you know, with the teacher, outreach from the teacher. And then the next step usually is social worker and administration. At that point, we would have a, you'll come, we would reach out to the families and then call that attendance officer and Watson and do some work to try and target, you know, again, what the issues are. And they're usually all over the place as to, as to what's going on. The biggest thing that we want to say is, is, you know, if you think your child is sick, unless they have like a fever or they're vomiting, just send them in. We're not going to send them home, just send them in. And in anything else, you know, we, we really want to be supportive and trying to, you know, just, this is their second home, bring them into us and then take care of what you need to do. Let's just get them to school. So it's really what we're trying to communicate. Thanks for trying, for trying. Anything else? Thank you.
Right, we pointed out, Ms. Moose's office, I'll say, Ms. Moose's office also has a curie. Thank you, Ms. Gallant. Thank you, Cook.
Good journey. I make a motion to accept the consent agenda F1 to L2 as a group.
Seconded by Ms. Larissa. All those in favor? All of the opposed?
Thank you. I make a motion to approve the consent agenda F1 to L2.
Second? The leader? All of them in favor? Thank you. Approved. Next, we're down to board roundtable. I will start with Ms. River.
Nothing to report.
I don't think there's anything either. Nothing to report? I, I can say that I went to the bus garage as the liaison of the bus garage about weeks ago and just talked with the director there just to let it be known that I would be working with them. As far as something to report, I spoke with Christine there as well and just made my introduction. That's what I got. Thank you.
Ms. Larissa? The only thing I have to report is that Ms. Groden, Ms. Rivera, myself, and Dr. Evans, we were at the Leadership in Education Conference. I thought one of you would say something. That sounds like I was waiting. At the end of July, it was early office conference, we got to learn a lot. And, and just have opportunity to share with other board nerves around the state and share with one another and gain some different perspectives, I think. And hopefully we'll be able to use that information to better educate ourselves and our community. Did I capture it?
Yeah, and I think it was also a great perspective to see that what our school district is struggling with is very common throughout some of the other school districts. So, you know, hearing different ways that they're addressing similar issues is a great opportunity to really collaborate. So.
Would it be okay to mention to retirees? Or not? Is that not okay right now? Is that okay? Okay, I just wanted to say, seeing Stacy Cornelius retiring. Seeing Stacy Cornelius retiring. Is is a big deal because she's she's wonderful and she was very much Monticello and actually had the pleasure of working with her. When I was a student teacher here about ten years ago. So um I worked with her personally freshly for a short time. She also taught my son this past year in algebra one. Uh but um this wonderful teacher and I also want to mention um Sue Foley, the nurse at Chase School. My kids all had Ms. Foley and uh she was also very wonderful. And uh we would get those calls about the temperature being ninety nine point nine or whatever it was, almost a hundred. And it was this conversations that could have. As a parent, you're like, oh, I gotta leave work, but uh the parent, you know. But um I just wanted to say that she she was great. They're both great. So they're the two retirees. I personally vouch that they're great. So it is a loss, but we appreciate them. Thanks.
Anyone else? Or anything they want to extend their report? Okay, um next, uh we have our building principal reports. Do you want to have any questions or comments about the report?
They are. Okay, that was so amazing to share as far as.
It's been primed already if you see them.
We're ready to go for that.
Yes.
Anyone else? Okay, that's as the um policy committee memo. Okay, did you want to speak about that?
Yes, absolutely. Uh thank you, Ms. Greco. So uh the board tonight will be conducting a few first readings. On several policies, most of which. Uh most of which come to us from the New York State School, recommendations from the schools, New York State School Boards Association. Uh that's those revisions to policy forty three twenty one point five. Uh policy forty seven sixty five, policy eighty one thirty. Uh so those three come to us from the New York State School Board Association and the policy committee. Uh approved their reading by the board. We're looking for first reading tonight and then next meeting, a second reading and adoption. Uh also tonight, the board will be act, uh conducting second reading and adoptions on uh three other policy updates that were recommended to us by the New York State School Board Association. The unsafe school transfer choice, student harassment and bullying prevention and intervention, school safety and educational climate reporting. You had done a first read of those last meeting. Also tonight, the board will be doing a first reading on a revision to our. Public use of facilities policy regulation. So most of you know, and the public knows. Uh we do allow the public to utilize uh our school grounds. Uh and especially those school grounds uh that are open uh around our buildings. So we've kind of tweaked the language a little bit to get a little. A little more flexibility at the same time, getting a little more specific. So in essence, uh we've changed the terminology from dark till civil twilight. Old twilight is actually. Uh I believe it's an aeronautical term that uh it's kind of after sunset, maybe before dark. Uh and then we amended it to say that. Uh the grounds, if not in use for school district purposes, are open to the public from three until civil twilight, Monday through Friday, when schools are in session. And eight AM in the morning until civil twilight, Monday through Friday, when schools are not in session. So in other words, this time of year, for example, uh the grounds would be available for public usage. Uh and then there's some other minor uh changes and uh geographical corrections. That's really the only change in that policy. And again, tonight, that's just a first read with a second reading and adoption at the next board.
Any questions about that? In the board uh policy committee section, I also wanted to say that uh for those of us that are on the policy committee, you receive a packet for preparation for the next meeting. So we can um read in advance, hopefully try to make that time as efficient as possible. And I think we have about well over thirteen things to review, so. Help everyone. Get ahead, sir. Anything else for our policy committee? Um the next thing is correspondence outcomes. As you see, there are none, and so we'll move forward to the capital project update.
Thank you, Ms. Greco. So a few items, uh our new architects, BBS, uh they're beginning their transition work. Uh on the designs for task four, which is the remaining uh monies available in our fifty four million dollar project. Uh as well as uh looking at uh amended designs, if you will, for the ARP or the American Rescue Plan ventilation work. Uh that's planned for next summer. So that's ventilation work that's tentatively planned for cook and Rutherford Elementary Schools. Uh you'll notice if you've been by Chase lately, there's a lot of work going on down there. That's work. As part of other federal relief money that we're using to enhance our ventilating, heating and ventilation uh in those elementary classrooms. So uh BBS will be picking up that project for next year. Uh the tennis courts, uh there was a temporary delay while they looked into uh I. Oh, a drainage issue for lack of a better term, but it was more of a pitch issue. Uh there seemed to be a slight depression at tail end of one of the courts. Uh they've looked at it and they believe that they have rectified it. Uh it's a very minor depression and should not affect. Play at all. So the sealant should be going on in the next week or so. Uh and then uh the tennis courts will be done before the start of the school year. That sealant will, when they put it on, they do. And a patch, light patch work where they're going to fill in anything that might be a small depression, then the ceiling goes on top of that. So uh the company is, the contractor is confident that that can go forward. And uh that should be open by the start of the school year. Uh and last but not least, uh we had a uh. A pretty thorough meeting yesterday. Yesterday with Train and Energia regarding the solar panel installation work being done presently at Chase. Uh you may recall that this was part of the energy performance contract. Uh and I had a final piece of the energy performance contract, right? And um. It had been delayed because uh Orange Rockland uh will not uh let us hook it to the grid. Uh without some uh significantly expensive uh hardware installation. That's not part of the project and would be a temporary solution until their substation is upgraded, which they estimate to be completed in twenty twenty eight. So after months of deliberation and meetings with Orange and Rockland uh between Train, Energia, our staff. We concluded that it is best to finish the uh solar panels and everything per the project design. Uh to cap the uh box at the school, so nothing is uh even inadvertently transferred to the grid. Uh and that we continue to dialogue with Orange and Rockland and impress upon them. You know, the energy that can be conserved, saved, put back on the grid uh once these panels come on board. Now, uh. Those of you familiar with energy performance contracts, uh they're, the district has to demonstrate kind of a cost savings over an eighteen, seventeen year period, eighteen year period. Uh Train and Energy believe we'll still be on track with that because um they, you know, they make conservative estimates on. Energy savings when they put these in. So they're confident it will still generate that. And in the contract with Train, any um. Any loss, if you will, will be made whole by Train. So they estimate that uh potential year one loss would be around seventy thousand dollars. Um so if we're not putting that kind of and reaping that energy savings from those solar panels, they will make us whole for that year and forever, however long it takes. Now, at some point, they might be able currently to enter a contract, they might be able to recoup some of that loss through energy savings. Um but they did guarantee that for us. Uh I've attended a few of these meetings with Orange and Rockland. Um it appears that the Wordsboro substation upgrade is. Uh for lack of a better term, relatively low on their list of of work to be done on their on their grid. Um I have reached out to Assemblywoman Doctor's office and uh we're working some communications through those channels as well. So um it's not what we had hoped for, um but uh it's the best we can do right now without a substation being online.
So when they start this work, no one knew they're gonna need this piece.
Right.
You didn't like research or?
It was not uh was not made known to us. Uh it was not uh as far as I know. No, did uh no information for any rock was given to the to the district or contractors who were designing the the project. Yes.
Did it say anything that?
No, because at that point, I don't think they had finalized all of the pieces. And similarly, Orange and Rockland up until recently was saying it was going to be completed in twenty twenty six. So there are a couple of different issues here. One was the hardware interface and putting the power back on the grid. The second was, once the project got rolling, oh, by the way, we're doing this, oh, substation upgrade should be online in twenty twenty six. That started raising some questions late last fall and then earlier this spring it became twenty twenty eight. So at the time that the uh the project was conceived, I guess in twenty nineteen, uh there was no information about that.
Um the minor issue on that. What happened if it is an issue that they think is minor once?
So the, we're getting uh. We're getting a guarantee on the courts for at least one. Freeze law cycle, uh and we're seeking additional warranties on that given uh what could be a potential issue there. Um because we don't know that it needs to be fixed. And that after a freeze law cycle, it would become evident whether or not that should be fixed or not. So right now, we think in talking it over with the architects and their engineers, Steve Lewis. Believe that it is good to go now with appropriate warranties uh with uh contractor. Right now, we have at least one year warranty. We're seeking additional warrants.
Additional warranty before we sign on.
Yes.
For additional.
There's retain, yeah, we have retained it.
One year or how many?
Right now, we have one year. We haven't, we haven't paid the contractor fully yet. We have to change.
They're holding money until we get full before.
Yeah, but that's been resolved, never installed.
What is this? Superfire extinguisher panels?
It's from that. Yes, that that work was never in the initial design. So that they had to do a change order for that. It's fine.
Are there no lockers for the kids with their jackets?
Correct, they eliminated that. No, there are lockers and kids do put some of their stuff in uh the guidance office. Uh suite, but there are some lockers that can be made available for students uh if absolutely necessary, but for the most part, no, there are no lockers.
They just carry their jacket with them?
Well, they don't, not as many books, I think. Most of it's. Uh the district made a decision when they designed the project to remove the lockers in those those wings and they've sealed them up on the other side. They 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 weren't being utilized. Do you have any more information on that? Yeah, they weren't being issued by administration, so.
Next is community event. Our next board meeting, uh just make note, will be on a Tuesday, August twenty second. Something to do with.
Yes.
That's a short answer. Um and then you can see some of the other meetings that are forthcoming for us. Next is community event. There's some um an article there for your review.
Late edition, uh we will be having a table at the Babel Festival this Sunday from nine to four, so please stop by. Uh we'll have some coloring for kids. And some other giveaways for kids and parents.
Um next, if we have questions and comments from the public. Do you have anything?
Yes, Mary Beth Beston.
Okay. Okay, so um as you come up, I have to read this. Okay.
Randomly in here?
Um the board of education requires the value of the board of education. Oh, the board of education recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and matters of public interest. In order to permit the fair and orderly expression of public comment, the following rule shall govern and will be administered by the presiding officer. Please note that the first public comment period of forty five minutes maximum duration will be extending the meeting in a period of fifteen minutes maximum at the end of the meeting. Either period may be extended by a majority vote of the board. Neither public comment period is a time for public discussion. And if necessary, the community member will be contacted for follow up. Um as you have done, if you wish to see, place your name, email and address, telephone number on the sign in sheet. Um prior to making your comment, state your name for the record, identify any group organization in which you represent. Comments are limited to three minutes or less per speaker and the speaker may not yield their time to another speaker in order to extend the time for comment. Those people may comment or identify any particular student or employee by name, position or situation in their comments. All comments are you directed to directed to the board president or designated. Handouts and or petitions are to be given only to the board president for distribution to the board. The board will receive and consider all written comments. Thank you so much.
I think I got everything.
I think I got it all. It's my first time, so I appreciate your patience.
Hi, I'm Mary Beth Beston. I represent my children, my parents here in the district. And reviewing the last couple of board meetings, I saw some trends and some patterns forming that. Through some concerns. Um so I just have a list here and I'm aware that you can't answer these questions for me tonight, but I look forward to your email responses. So what are your plans for addressing the staffing shortage? What measures are you going to take to retain the employees you have left? At this time, do we have enough teachers to open the buildings? And I've read online that some districts are being forced to hire unqualified people to fill vacancies. Are we considering this as an option? How many students will be in a classroom if we don't fill these vacancies? And previously, the teachers' union had requested to meet with the board in order to address some of these issues. The board voted not to have that meeting, seven to two. The board's continued lack of desire to be informed makes you all complicit. So in light of this record number of resignations and more are to come, has the board reconsidered this avenue? Will you meet with the MTA now so you can learn what the culture of the buildings really are? And then maybe we could stop this insanity. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh thank you, Ms. Beston. Uh thank you for coming out. And sharing your thoughts and Dr. Evans will be replying to your email. Uh next, we have the superintendent's update.
Thank you, Ms. Greco. So tonight, we do welcome a number of new staff members and I want to take a moment to uh recognize them. And if you, I see a lot of faces, some not so familiar to me, so forgive me, but uh if I call your name and you're here, please stand to be recognized. First, the new physical education teacher in the middle school, Lindsay Rao. Uh she's not new to the district, but she's completed her teaching certification and she stuck with us. Uh she is an uh early childhood elementary teacher at St. John Street Arena in the town. Special welcome back to uh Monticello High School alumni and new social studies teacher. Special welcome back to, uh, Monticello High School alumni and new social studies teacher of St. John Street, Phil Baldwin. Uh, welcome to a new teaching assistant at St. John Street, Dan Spagnoli. We don't know if they're here tonight, but we have two new food service helpers, Michelle Colazos and Catherine Colazos. They're here. Uh, returning as an elementary teacher, but this time not as a substitute elementary teacher, Jennifer Hart, Rutherford Elementary School. And another returning alumni, uh, who will be a new special education teacher at Rutherford Elementary School, Rosalie Shepherd. Welcome back. I don't know that she's here tonight, but she will be serving as a long-term substitute in middle school math, uh, is Susan Smith. I don't think Smith is here. Uh, welcome to, uh, Stephanie DeVito, uh, who is a new teaching assistant in our district. Uh, Adriana Taylor, who is a, uh, new, uh, teaching assistant in our district. Uh, Morgan Cirx was a new teaching assistant at the, I believe at the high school. Uh, William Durango, new custodial worker. Uh, welcome Ashley Fury as a new elementary teacher. And, uh, she was here earlier, but I don't see her anymore. And that is, uh, Michelle Nolte. Uh, welcome back. And Ms. Nolte will be serving as interim assistant principal at Rutherford Elementary School. Alright, so, uh, relative to, uh, you've heard me recognize Ms. Nolte. Uh, we are, uh, going to, uh, have her fill in as, uh, interim assistant principal at Rutherford Elementary School. Uh, the Board of Education had an emergency meeting a little over a week ago to appoint Elizabeth Bedford as the new assistant principal Kaiser, so we welcome her then. Uh, and, uh, we will be temporarily suspending the high school principal search while we help to, uh, get this school year off the ground. Uh, our interim high school principal, Dr. Jerry Furman, will be continuing in that. Uh, and we expect to reopen the high school principal search, uh, in December. Uh, and we do continue to, uh, search and fill various instructional and non-instructional vacancies throughout the district. Uh, the Hall of Distinction Committee will be meeting again on Monday, August twenty-first. I believe that's at five or five thirty, five PM, I think. Uh, I believe Ms. Rivera and Ms. Mason Greco are on the, and Ms. Weiner are on that committee. I will be meeting then to open up, uh, nominations. Uh, I've drafted, uh, four goals, uh, for the upcoming school year, uh, and I've shared those with the board in board docs. Uh, I'd ask that you please, and then I just did the goals first because I wanted feedback on those goals to make sure I was in the right direction before I got into particulars around activities. Uh, so if you can, uh, give those a review, please, and if you have any feedback on them, uh, to give them to Mr. Crumley. And we will dial up that way and I will have, uh, the activities portion of it completed, uh, for your review and hopeful adoption at the August twenty-second meeting. Uh, in the news recently, there was a public hearing, uh, on a potential new village. Uh, that might be formed, uh, along the border of the town of Paulsburg and the town of Thompson. Um, that may or may not have any impact on us as a school district. Most of that depends on the number of students enrolled in it. So, uh, if there is a change in student enrollment, it could have an effect on us by way of, uh, increasing, uh, private school numbers. Uh, many of the students, uh, who live in that area now attend to private schools. We have approximately three hundred eighty-four school-aged resident students. Who live in, uh, or who attend to private schools in the area that's proposed to be a new village. Um, so there's a number of different things that could happen here. There could be no change at all. Uh, there could be an increase in private school, uh, enrollment. There could be a, an increase in enrollment that might lead that community to seek its own carve-out as a, a distinct new, uh, public school district. But really, right now, there's nothing for us to do other than, uh, our regular consultation with the private schools there in terms of providing special education, transportation, entitlement services as we do every year. So if anything changes there, I'll update you. Uh, tonight the board will be conducting first readings on its district-wide school safety plan and the building level emergency response plans for next year. Uh, the building plans are confidential documents, so those are not to be discussed in public because they have specific information on how we would respond to particular emergencies. The district safety plan, however, is a public document, uh, and there will be a public hearing on that document at our next meeting on August twenty-second. And we'll be seeking your, uh, approval for that then. Uh, the New York State Recover from COVID School Program Grants, or the RECOs Grants, uh, hit the news. I believe last week, uh, the governor put out a press release on these. I've shared information, uh, hyperlinked with you, uh, on the, the grant document. It looks like this is a, we're having our, uh, grant writers now review it to see if there's anything in there that, uh, might be of use for us. Uh, but in essence, it's a one-hundred percent match. In other words, we put up all the money initially. And then there's a formula for, I think it's twelve hundred students or twelve hundred dollars per student service in year one. And then year two, it kind of continues to go downward from there. So we, and it has to be for new programs. So we are looking into it. Um, but, uh, it's, uh, not quite as generous, certainly as the federal aid was during COVID. Um, and there's a lot more strings to this type of grant, so. Because of the very consideration of the needs of our students, we'll pursue it as best we can. Um, also in the news, the front page of the Record this morning, there was a story on, uh, asylum-seeking families and migrant students. Uh, the State Education Department has issued, uh, kind of an updated statement on that, but we have not yet seen any significant changes in our enrollment patterns or receiving. Uh, new students, however, uh, should they reside here, uh, we will provide, uh, welcome them and provide them all the necessary supports, uh, that they need. Um, and then lastly, summer school graduation is next Friday, August eighteenth at eleven AM. Uh, that is in the high school auditorium. Uh, we do not, uh, wear caps and gowns for that. The student, the graduates will, but, uh, any attending Board of Education members or administration, uh, dress professionally. So that's eleven AM next Friday. That's all that I have. Questions?
No, the answer is strings attached that. All calls, uh, that it comes.
Well, it's, um, it's not quite as generous as other grants have been historically in the past. In other words, so my understanding of it is the district would create a program, implement, pay for that program. And then seek reimbursement for students who attend that program. Uh, at the compensation rate of twelve hundred dollars per student, regardless of how big of a program you do. You're only getting compensated for the students who attend it. And then in year two, it's a reduced rate, uh, from twelve hundred dollars. So it's not a, you know, apply for four hundred thousand dollars to, to do this stuff. It's you front the money, you create a new program and then you apply for the grant for it and then you get money recovered back. So that's kind of what I put, I say strings. Those are the strings.
Any other questions for Dr. Evans? Next, we have our assistant superintendent for business, Eva Ayala.
Um, this evening I only have one item for the board. Um, I'm asking for to award. Milk bid that you participated in the DCML Cooperative Service. Bid was opened about a month ago. We only had one bid, so it was three bid. And we got two bid this time and, um, I'm recommending hometown distributors give word to bid.
Yeah, I'm just asking so that it can be in the public session, but is that the same company that we've been using this past year?
No, this is a new company, the company that we've been using for the last couple of years decided not to bid at all here on any district.
This company's in my cell, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Next, we have our assistant superintendent for technical and instruction, Carolyn.
President. Uh, so I want to start the, my present, or my report with thanking, um, Cook Elementary and, uh, Gallit and Mrs. Smoots for and all of, well, everybody else in the committee for a really thorough job on their plan. Um, and you know, from the presentation, you can see they have a lot of great ideas. And, uh, we're working on applying for the grants for getting those ideas in place through grant money. So thank you, um, for all your hard work. So along those same lines, working through the title grant, um, I do have some contracts I wanted to talk to you about. Um, a lot of them being funded through the title grant that we are working on right now, um, which will be submitted by August thirty-first. Um, the first, uh, thing on my list is Summit K-12 Holdings. These are software licenses. For our L students, so in the process of, um, our students that are L's learning, um, they use the software from Summit K-12 Holdings. Um, you'll see a contract for Hoplin Mifflin Harcourt. This is our Math one eighty and Read one eighty. Um, as Mrs. Gallit alluded to when she was talking about curriculum, um, that, that contract is strictly for professional developments to make sure that all of our teachers. Have the appropriate, um, training to be using the curriculum, um, that the district has, has committed to. Uh, the third one is Change Impact. This is for Change Impact. Looking at the RECO grant that Dr. Evans just mentioned. Um, but more importantly, we did find another grant. It's called the Stronger Connections Grant. Um, it is a three-year grant and it is focusing on students or populations of schools that are low socioeconomic. Um, there is a potential for between two thousand and thirty-six hundred dollars per student over a three-year period of time. And the focus of this brand is new programs again, but it isn't a matching grant. It's an upfront grant. Um, and we are looking at things along the lines of social, emotional, physical wellbeing. Uh, engagement of families and engagement of students, so it falls in line with attendance. It falls in line with connecting with our families. Um, it also, you will get points for programs that have to do with advancing equity. Um, and again, these are for school districts that have a high socioeconomic, low socioeconomic population, which, um, Monticello falls into. So Change Impact believes this would be a good grant for us and they are going to look to submit for it. It is due, uh, early September and the Change Impact Agreement is solely for the, um, cost of them writing this grant for us. And then the fourth one, School Counselors for MTSS Contract. Uh, our, our guidance counselors are going to be attending an in-person PD around MTSS. Um, that is something you'll hear a lot about this year because we are really trying to get a consistent MTSS plan. Utilized by all of our, uh, buildings and in a consistent way. So this is one step towards that goal. Um, our Healthy Kids Contracts are also for your approval tonight. Healthy Kids provides our after-school program. For school-aged children and has in the past. They also provide our pre-K before and after-school program. Um, and this year they will be providing our before-school program. For school-aged children instead of it being district-provided. Um, so those, those are four different contracts. Um, they're for your approval. And, uh, next is the Visite Academic Professional Services Agreement. So. Visite is one of our private schools that, uh, receives some of our title funding. And so you will be seeing in the next couple of months, a lot of these contracts because they are independent contractors. Through Monticello and that's how they, um, are able to access those grant funds. And lastly, the Honors Haven Contract. So Honors Haven is a overnight conference and retreat for our, um, MBK students that comes directly from that grant and it's an opportunity for, um, about twenty of our students to experience, uh, a retreat and an overnight experience. Um, and that will be happening the end of August. And lastly, I just wanted to mention, um, along the lines of teacher retention, we have been working really hard. Um, at, to take a look at our mentoring program for new teachers, um, as well as a new teacher orientation. Program that we are, we will be doing August twenty-ninth and thirtieth. And so there's been a lot of people trying to put some great things together for our new staff. Um, including a bus ride around our district, um, and really taking a look at the students that we serve. Um, and giving them some great ideas as they begin their teaching experience here. Um, and again, that will be on August twenty-ninth and thirtieth. And that is all I have. Sorry for being long-winded.
Are there any questions for Ms. Carolyn? Ms. Riley?
Thank you. Um, can you explain the Change Impact Grant Writing, in particular about their, they want to write a grant for a specific. Program? Is that to provide curriculum to the students? Can you just explain that a little bit more? I know you, you spoke on it, but.
So that's the grant that I just mentioned. It's a three-year grant. Uh, it's through the New York State Education Department. Um, it is geared towards districts that are, uh, have a low socioeconomic, um, population, so a poverty rate of fifty percent or higher, which we fall into. Um, and it's really looking at providing more family engagement opportunities, but the money would not be used for curriculum. It would be used for things like family engagement opportunities, um, restorative practices, social, emotional health. Uh, you could use it for hiring more social workers and guidance counselors in order to. Be that social, emotional link and also to create some more family engagement. Um, so there's quite a few things that you can use with the money, um, but the grant, because we are eligible for it. And it depends on how many people put in for the grant. This is one of those competitive grants. If very few districts put in, we have a better chance of getting it. Um, if everybody puts in for it, we don't have as great of a chance or we may not get as much money. So it's not a guarantee. Um, and so Change Impact does that work for us to write the best plan they can in order to help us better, uh, have the opportunity to get that money.
Right. So then do they put together the plan ahead of time to propose or are they just putting something out? In order to attain the money? Do you know, are they saying like, we're going to use it for parent involvement? Or is Change Impact discussing about how they're going to specifically use it and then go out and get the money? Is that how it works?
So yeah, they act as a liaison. So I'm giving them the information, um, as well as, you know, they're looking at our cook and our KLR. Improvement plans because there's a lot of stuff in there around school climate and culture. Um, and so, and, and both Cook and KLR had to do some parent surveys in, or in student surveys in order to complete their plan. Um, the survey that we did through Alaberta is also a survey that they have looked at to look at needs of our district. Um, so it is geared specifically to our district with me being a lead or being the feeder of the information. And they're just taking that information and packaging it up nice and pretty into a proposal and sending it out to the state.
Then if the state says, okay, we'll give you the money, then whatever is in that plan goes through or does it come through here again for us to review?
Well, it would come through in the, uh, form of, kind of like a grant opportunities. So we would then say this is what we're actually spending the money on. We're going to have, you know, this consultant, we might take this field trip. We might have parent engagement nights, like, so then we would be able to put some ideas on paper.
Okay. Then the board reviews it and then you would say, yeah, that sounds great.
Actually, no, really, not a board.
So you would, um, we would bring information back to the board about the generalities of the grant, you know, what are the programs we're looking to do in it? And then as we contract with different agencies or, like, purchase stuff, you would see that through, uh, action items on your agenda.
It wouldn't be political at all, right? Okay, so when it's talking about restored practice and stuff, how, um, and you just said restored practices, working with families, courting, um. The restored practice piece would be like if, um, you're trying to use like the, the cozy corner area, that kind of thing. Would that be?
That would be an example.
Example.
Yep. So using the money to maybe do a mural in one of our buildings to make our schools more appealing, to have students and parents want to visit our schools. So things like that, redoing like, because redoing their libraries, make it more inviting to students to want to come in and read a book. So those are some examples of improving cultural employment around the CL.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other question? Thank you. The, um, the one eighty map and. What we now?
Uh, HMH, the Hoplin Mifflin.
Yeah. Um, so the student code of conduct is attached in there. Is that supposed to be?
So that was because, um, there's riders that are, that our attorney, uh, asked us to be, make part of a contract. There's a generic contract that goes to all of our consultants and Hoplin had some, uh, consultants and Houghlin had some uh, questions about that contract. And so the, our attorney said, as long as we attach our code of conduct. Um, there were some things in our code of conduct that applied to their concerns to the contract that would um, allow, that would kind of qualify their questions and allow for us to put that contract through.
What policies attached to the back?
Well, the code of conduct is a policy, right? And, and any other?
Based on what Houghlin Mifflin wanted to have in the contract, we wanted to make sure that these references appear to them, that they need to abide by these policies. This is coming to us from our legal counsel.
They said they attached all this though, this full safety eight one three zero? So what were they concerned about?
That was between Houghlin and our attorney. They had a back and forth um, looking at that, and that's what our attorney said. They were comfortable with their concerns being taken out of the attachment as long as we attach those items and they understood they had to abide by those policies.
Confused. So what was taken out of the contract for Houghlin that this was attached?
It was negotiated between our attorney and Houghlin's attorneys. So this comes to the board after that lengthy negotiation. If we can go back and ask uh, our attorneys for a memo.
Yeah.
Particulars, but um, I, you know, have faith in our legal counsel that what they've done in reviewing this is work that we contracted them to.
Well, I just want to understand what was in there that prompted our legal department to put all these other policies and everything in there?
And I don't think they were playing the policy then. I think they were just there as reminders.
Yeah. If you're, you know, please be mindful of and use this, prefer to this policy. Your actions have to be consistent with this policy. That's why they're in there clearly.
Our math and our reading curriculum that we've been using for several years, this company is, is the writer of that curriculum, and they are coming to offer professional development to our teachers to make sure that um, you know, they're using the curriculum as intended.
Pretty much saying, these are our boundaries, no crossing boundaries. Is that what?
Agreed to this in your concrete.
Yeah, it is, it's more of a
I think confirmation on the hours of healthy kids. Tell me, uh, looks like the elementary schools run from seven AM to six thirty PM, is that correct?
No, so it's the morning is seven AM until nine ten, I believe, AM.
Oh, great. Yeah.
Okay, and then the afternoon is from whatever the dismissal time is until six PM.
And that's for the elementary school? And that is um, just for the pre-K? Pre-K hours?
I believe they're the same. In hours. So if a parent feels that they are um, going to be eligible, and we're going to put a link on our website um, that gives them that information of income eligibility. Then they would contact the childcare council and fill out the appropriate paperwork. They would have to then do their um, verification of income. And then the childcare council determines their eligibility and how much their subsidy will be, and they pay that directly to healthy kids. So it does not come to us, and it does not come to the parent. It goes directly to healthy kids.
You're welcome. Oh, another question. Uh, Honors Haven, um, that's for the um, My Brothers Keeper program. Did you talk about that already? I'm sorry.
Okay. So it's a retreat that they're going to as part of the My Brothers Keeper program. It's solely paid by a grant. Um, and it's for our members of My Brothers Keeper to see the curriculum of My Brothers Keeper and experience that uh, overnight.
Um, I listened, didn't the admin have a retreat last summer there? That wasn't, was that My Brothers Keeper again?
No.
Right. Thank you.
We do a retreat at a, alright.
Okay.
Are there any other questions? Rivera?
Yeah, um, I'd like to make a motion to take action items T one to T twenty-seven as a group.
Give a second. Second by Mr. Groden. All those in favor? All those opposed? Order, Ms. Rivera?
I'd like to make a motion to approve action items T one to T twenty-seven.
Is there a second? Second by middle of the room, so. All those in favor?
Oh, do you have discussion? Oh, sorry. Um, on the first read on policy forty-three twenty-one point five. On the fourth new Roman numeral. It says, now we're changing it that we have must obtain this signature. We do to provide the copy or the electronic access. How are we going to get the signature on the electronic access? If someone's received it. Also, to make sure we have that placed before we go to.
Well, yeah, but we can also adopt, you know, we can board adopts a policy, we adjust practices around it. Better understanding of it. What they're acknowledging is that there needs to be sign off from the school staff member that they receive the copy or they have electronic access to. Right?
Correct. So this doesn't provide for parents also?
Right, but they would get that from a parent. They would still get the sign off.
On the copy, not the, I'm just thinking from a, if we have to send it to another, let's say, private school agency that had the IEP, how are we going to get the signature from electronic access? That's all.
Well, you're getting the, you're, you're getting the signature separately. They're signing that they either received the paper copy or that they've been granted electronic access to the IEP. Whoever they're, whoever the party is. The designated employee defined in section two above must obtain the signature of each person covered by this policy, indicating that you she can either receive the copy or have been given electronic access.
There's usually now that.
Correct, but what this policy is allowing is for greater electronic access.
So people were just gone for IEP?
Yeah, that they designated employee, so we're talking about employees, section two. No, section two must obtain a signature of each person covered by this policy, indicating that you, so TSC chair, make sure everybody signs that they've received a copy of the IEP. They collect those signatures.
So it's all interim?
Right.
So if you're providing services for someone out of the district. Okay, so is there anything about the HIPAA part of this? So is, are those electronic access? Is it a program? Are we sending it by email, or how are we?
So it is for, right? So right now you have most of this policy already written. This is just if we wanted to give somebody a password at the IEP online electronically, they would have to sign that yes, I'm I've been given access to this. Basically, you're telling the person that they need to abide by uh, privacy laws. When, that they're appropriate to have access to the IEP, that they're expected to abide by privacy laws.
That we weren't putting ourselves in a bind trying to get the signature electronically, we couldn't, same, we must get the signature. Paper copy is easier for sending in a room and everyone signed it. But electronically is a little different. I just want to make sure we weren't hurting ourselves out there. We couldn't get that signature.
No, you, because you're not getting an electronic signature. Getting a written signature and acknowledging that they have electronic access. And it's just, the new words in the policy are electronic access. Correct. Well, they have electronic access to the record.
Um, and I have two other questions. So one is on policy eight one four zero, which is the second reading. On T eighteen. On the second page, it says that the list will be provided, or shall be revised annually presented to the board. And I just didn't know, when did that happen? When do we expect for that? And also on the annual school safety educational climate summary data collection form that should be also provided to the board? I didn't know when those things would happen.
Is that the latter in this policy or the other policy?
The latter is in the other one, zero, one, one.
So that's the old beta report? Oh, no, this is the, the rest. Let's go back to your first question on the So this is for, it doesn't really apply here. Um, because you don't have schools to be determined unsafe by New York State Education Department. So New York State Education Department annually puts out unsafe schools. And what this policy basically says, if you're, if you have unsafe schools, you have to do this, this. So we have it on the books in case we ever were to be identified. Uh, but you know, knock on wood, you haven't been identified and you know, plans to do it. So that's for the eighty-one forty.
Okay.
The now for zero, one, one, five, just need a reference here, Ms. Jersey.
Second to last page, Stan. On the top of the page. Six.
Yeah, so that's the old beta report. So that uh, is something I believe that gets done by uh, Ms. Lainey Levinson, like it gets wrapped into my report sometimes. We haven't done a like what you saw tonight, Cook, Cook, or wanted to, but um, typically we just provide the board with that data.
I just didn't know what, because we have to get it annually. It's a special report that she does that we provided right thereafter. You know, sometimes in the high school report, we get some of that information, but it sounds like there's one district report that gets reported.
So that gets submitted this time of the year, right? It's December one?
No, it's actually due mid-July.
Okay, so once that gets finalized, I think the state has to finalize it. Once that gets done, then we can write the board what happens.
I just meant to bring up earlier about T six. How a community member gifted the school Rutherford. Um, I looked it up, what it was, because I didn't know what it was. But it's a, I thought it was a laser cutter. It appears to be, it's just a three D one. It's like a, instead of building something, the resin, whatever, in three D. You're taking a block and presumably you're cutting it down, the three D. You could maybe make like chess pieces or something. It sounds cool. So either way, I just wanted to, I meant to discuss earlier. So I'm glad Ms. Jersey uh, went into discussion here. So thank you, uh, Mr. Gabriel Espinoza.
Um, any other points of discussion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve action items T one to T twenty-seven.
Second by middle of the room, so. All those in favor? All those opposed? Okay, um, down to correspondence. No correspondence is located there. Um, are there any other people, questions, comments for the public?
No, there are none.
We have, no. Um, but we have no other comments or questions from the public. Um, I'll take a motion for adjournment. I'll let you have it. Motion by Mr. Groden. Seconded by Ms. Weiner. Um, I don't think I was going to hear. There, all those in favor? So order, thank you so much. Nine eleven.
Nine one one, watch your mercy. Get me out of here.